Are you ready for the screen? Does the screen get to you?
Hi. Uh, call this order, uh, meeting. We're in a school committee order. Thank you guys for coming. Tonight we have members from Berlin, Boylston Select Board, uh, finance committees, and town administrators here with us. Uh, Kim Rossette's here as the district attorney to sort of help observe the meeting, help moderate the meeting if needed. But, uh, basically we want to give you a very preliminary look at the numbers that Nancy presented to the school committee in our last meeting, uh, for the budget. Just to keep in mind, the committee's not voted on the budget. We haven't really discussed it in too much depth yet, but this is just sort of on the heels of our conversations last spring, saying we were gonna start these conversations earlier, uh, just bringing everybody together. So Nancy, if you wanna take that over.
Sure. So I really wanna start by pressing that this is preliminary and it's October, it's very early, so hard to think a year ahead, but Carol and I met with all the administrators, um, met with all the departments to really get a feel of what our above-level service needs are going into fiscal year 25. Um, and like I said, so we did it for capital and we did it for the general budget. So I'll briefly go over them with you. I think Carol and I have some high-ticketed items, um, for each of the schools, and then we have other items on there. So some that are absolute must and some that are more important. We wanna keep them on there, but some that are just an absolute must, but I'll go through that as we go through it. So we'll start, I'm just gonna, we have 11 new positions is what it comes on here, is what it comes down to. So we have three paraprofessional positions. Two of the paraprofessionals, one are for each of the elementary schools, one for each town. They're floating paraprofessional positions. So we, um, would like to have a paraprofessional that can float amongst the needed classrooms as the day moves forward. A lot of, they can help with callouts, they can help with weekly consultations, supervision sessions, stuff like that. So that's in each of the elementary schools. And then in Berlin, we, uh, put in a kindergarten paraprofessional. Uh, we currently have one at that elementary school and we would like one for each of the classrooms. That's one thing that we added last year was a paraprofessional in Boylston Elementary to have a paraprofessional in each of the classrooms. So we would like that in Berlin also. Classroom teacher in that Boylston Elementary. Definitely need, that's on our Carol's and I top, uh, top priority list. With the movement of grades next year and the expected increase in enrollment, another classroom teacher is absolutely needed. It's in the district improvement plan. Um, in Berlin Elementary, we currently have a half-time math tutor. We would like to increase that to full-time. And in Boylston Elementary, we would very much like to have a recess slash lunch aid to help with the children during lunchtime and recess time. Currently, there's usually one supervision of double outside at recess time and we have about 60-plus kids out on the playground. So they're always kinda stretching and looking and trying to find somebody else to assist them, so that would be very, uh, helpful. One of the things that's really come up this year is landscaping. Landscaping with the elementary school grounds, landscaping, excuse me, with the athletic fields or land. So we would like to put a grounds person into the budget, ground slash maintenance person. So this person would help with outside landscaping and would also assist with the athletic fields. Um, we currently contract out for that for $20,000, so we would take that out and then the difference would be pulled out. The occupational therapist, that, that's district-wide, um, need additional support for our current caseload. Currently, we contract out for two, two days of service. We would like to come, we would like to bring that in-house full-time. A floating nurse. So a floating, and that's district-wide, it would go to all three schools. A floating nurse would support all the health offices. We need additional health coverage for absences, screening, failed trips, and gave-day activities. So we currently are contracting out for a floating nurse, um, and we would like, for two days, we would like to bring that in-house and have it full-time. We tried to get that in last year's budget and it's one of the things that we ended up taking out to try to help make the budget work, so we would like to make that happen this year. One of the things, um, that the MIAA, that's for, um, athletics, they are, it's looking very favorably that they are requiring an athletic trainer next year. So if that passes, we would be putting an athletic trainer in the budget. And we also want an athletic trainer in the budget. It's a necessary, um, position that we feel we need for our kids with sports. In Tohonto, we need a high school math teacher. So the high school math teacher will help teach financial literacy and provide required coursework. Along with that, we would also like to increase our athletic director to full-time. We currently have an athletic director that teaches math and that is an athletic .280 athletic director. Um, so that kinda goes hand-in-hand with the math teacher. So the, the math teacher who teach financial literacy take over if it ends up being the current athletic director, take over his classes and it would help with that. Then, one thing, this is on our watch list because it's very early and we have to watch the caseload and we're not sure if this is needed, um, is an .40 FTE adjustment counselor. Um, this would be for Boylston Elementary. It's too early to tell if it's needed. We have a new principal there. She wants to take her time and really review everything and determine if it's needed. So that, that's on our watch list. This year, um, we're in negotiations with all of our unified parties. So it's our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our administrative support personnel, and our tutors. Um, it's early. We have one meeting with them so far, so it's very early in the process. So we have to put aside some money for negotiations for that. Um, a lot of them, we, we need to make adjustments. We also need to look at certain positions within the special ed department. We have special ed coordinators who we need to look at because part of their salaries, they were paid from a grant and now that grant is no longer, it was the EST of the grant. We made it work this year with different funds, but we gotta put that back into the general budget, so we're adding that into the budget. Um, and then there's other administrators that are up for negotiations this year. So that's, uh, approximately 199,5,000 at this point in time for additional increases. And so with personnel, that comes to about 108,61,000 dollars amongst all three. When I finish going over all of this, I'll break it out by the towns to, so we know where we stand. Under IT, one of the things that we would like for all schools and the district offices are walkie-talkies. This is a safety, security item. Uh, we've been speaking with the police department in Berlin who are trying to get a vendor that can coordinate the technology altogether by using the same vendor and it's a safety issue, so. And so we will have walkie-talkies in every classroom, in two of the district offices that can connect to the schools, so we can hear emergencies happen and stuff like that. Miscellaneous software is the rest of it. So the technology section comes to about 66,000 dollars. Curriculum supplies and materials. Lots of miscellaneous items in here. Um, some of the bigger ticket items, we need chemistry materials, physics materials, social studies books, um, bigger ticket items, I'm just going for the rest of our additional safety care trainers. It's for strength training. It's in our district improvement plan, so that's for our 11,000 dollars. Total of those come to 89,000 dollars. One of the things that the school committee has expressed to us, um, is that they don't, they do not want parents purchasing supplies. Parents have purchased supplies in the past such as notebooks, scissors, colored pencils, highlighters, drawing, erase markers, stuff like that in the elementary schools, going down to crayons, headphones. Um, they would like us to build those supplies into the budget. So we did that for each elementary school. Um, so that's for Berlin. We based that off of 228 kids, 50 dollars each, it's 11,000 dollars. For Boylston, basing that off of 316 kids, 50 dollars each, 15, 16,000 dollars. Tohonto, same thing, except you know, you're, you're moving into actually more, a little more high-end stuff. You got calculators, shoe protectors, items such as that with your notebooks and pencils and highlighters. So that comes out to about 568 kids, 30 dollars a kid, uh, 17,000 dollars. Other big ticketed items. This current school year, we're having a preschool evaluation done. So currently we have preschool at Tohonto and we have preschool at Berlin. And we would like, we're having somebody come in to look at these programs. We're, um, thinking of maybe taking preschool out of Tohonto and putting it into the elementary schools, kind of, so their, uh, the little kids are amongst their peers. But we're having a consultant come in to really look at the whole program, look at the special education aspect of it, um, and see what their recommendations are. There's a lot of, uh, criteria that go along with it. Um, so with that, that's being done in March. We won't get the results back probably end of May if we're lucky. So at this point in time, we built in 10,000 dollars for each elementary school because there's definitely gonna be resources that we're gonna need to enhance the program. They could range anywhere from needing a bathroom, 'cause there's criteria where especially special education kids, bathroom has to be a certain distance from where the classrooms are. Um, so we, we did a placeholder in 10,000 dollars each, for each elementary school. So for supplies and materials, that came to approximately 68,000 dollars. NEASC, so NEASC is coming in the 25, 26 school year. Very small ticketed item, we're just budgeting about 2,000 dollars to kinda start preparing for our NEASC. NEASC is a big, um, undertaking and we need to start preparing for that. Transportation. Several concerns have been expressed to us this year that our runs in Berlin are very long. We, so it is by law, the students can be on the bus ride for an hour. In Ber, in Boylston, the max is probably about 45 minutes. Berlin, they're stretched out to an hour and it's difficult for a lot of the little kids. So we have put in additional bus for Berlin, for, and it comes to about 59,000 dollars. We would like to add a late bus for, to add additional clubs. Right now our clubs, a lot of our clubs take place during lunchtime. We would like to kinda get the kids back in school, back in, you know, after school besides athletics. So, um, Wednesday late bus, we would like to add. Right now we have it on Tuesday, Thursday, so we would like to do it for three days a week starting next year. One of the difficulties that I have discovered as I've been, um, really digging into the revolving accounts is our athletics. My predecessor in the athletic account took a lot of funds out of it, one-time funds such as landscaping, um, and was paying transportation out of it. But now we got to the point where that account is dwindling down and I can't afford to keep it up, even with the athletic fees that we're receiving. So I'm building back in the trans, the athletic bus for 30,000 dollars at Tohonto. And so that comes to about 92,000. And lastly, facilities, miscellaneous classroom supplies, uh, from the, the school committee doesn't wanna ask the parents for anything anymore, so, um, hand sanitizer, paper towels, tissues for the little kids at the elementary school. That's put in there. Septic pump, um, preventative maintenance. We've had a little bit of issue, some, a little bit this year with the, the septic systems and one of the things that was never put into the budget was preventative maintenance. We gotta put that back in the budget. We gotta start having the septic looked at yearly. So that's put back into the budget. And the other thing that's put back into the budget is landscaping for athletic fields due to what I just mentioned with the athletic revolving account. So that comes to about 35,000. So those are all, are, at this point in time, very early, very preliminary, are above-level service items. So to give you a lowdown is what that means for your towns. I base this off of last year's assessments rates. Obviously it's too early to even try to figure out what the assessments rates will be this year. So is it, it comes to about an approximately 10% increase. So 5.25% is the above level, 4.75% is your general budget. And then, so that's about 2.3 million. Um, so for Boylston, 730,000. In Berlin, 510,000 total increase. Uh, now this is just above-level service with a total increase, not the whole budget. So last year's total increase was 18%. At this point in time, we're projecting 10%. Total, checking total budget with above-level service and our general budget. I know I went really fast, so who has questions?
Through the chair, if I may?
Chris.
I missed one thing. When you were talking about the new positions, you were talking about, after you discussed the Paris, you mentioned the classroom teacher, but I didn't catch.
Oh, Boylston Elementary.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that'll take every grade to three teachers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
No?
It will take.
At Boylston Elementary, it will take fifth grade to three teachers. There's still one really small class there coming. So we'll need another teacher in two years, three years.
I apologize.
It's one of my son's class. That's the only reason I know it's my son is it's my son's class. The third grade right now, only has 38 children.
Yeah, 'cause the fifth grade has two and I think there's about 24 in each class.
Yeah, so that's where they'll need to hire is for that older grade level and then that last third grade class, they'll have two more years. Yeah, then they'll need a teacher.
Another question. On the, um, the preschool, I know at least where my kids are here, which was a long time ago, um, they had a program here where kids could get certified as some sort of caregivers that impacted if you moved into BES.
It may impact that. It may require that those students go over to one of the elementary schools if that's the decision that we've made to move that over. One of the issues that I wanted to bring that up when Nancy was mentioning preschool, that's why we're trying to do this study to find out what's the best use of the preschool program and what's the best way we can utilize services there. Right now, they're integrated preschool programs, so we have to have, um, special education service providers for elementary driving over to Tohonto to do those, to do the services that they provide. So what we're trying to look at is should, should we have them back at the elementary schools and the homeschool where they can get closer access to them? So that's one of the considerations. Plus we have to look at the enrollment numbers, those in Berlin here. Can we bring them all here? I mean, that might be a possibility depending on, on the numbers we're getting. So that, we can't make those decisions with that information and that's what that person would do this year.
They're just ideas that we floated out there.
Right, so we need a more solid, more solid information for all the decision.
Right now all the preschools are also halftime, half-days. And maybe it's an option that we could go full-time. Maybe that would be more entertaining to some parents that work full-time.
We may get trapped more of our own preschool here rather than going out because they're looking for something that would be full-time.
Yeah.
Preschool, which is unusual for more days for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, man.
So we're looking at, by my understanding, 10%, roughly.
Yeah.
But last year, or this current year, I guess, we, I know that Boylston used, I don't think we used free cash, but we did use almost all of our new growth projected, uh, revenue coming in, which we cannot expect that number will be anywhere near that, uh, going into next year because last year we had two or three actually very large commercial buildings coming in. So there's gonna be a deficit there and I think if we did use free cash or any free cash that was used, I, I mean, I can't speak for Berlin, but I, I would, if it was Boylston, I would say we're not going to have the free cash that we had last year, that we had a significant amount of free cash for that same reason. So really any of that money that was spent using Berlin was budgeted using free cash is also gonna hit the tax rate. I know it's not gonna change your percentage, but it's, it's going to be a much larger hit on your tax rate than just that, just that 10%. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Got you. What, I was under the impression that free cash was spent on the capital improvement.
I'm pretty sorry, Chris, to keep me honest, that, that Berlin used some free cash towards the school budget last year, right?
Through the chair, uh, we, we did. We actually had to put, uh, just shy of 383,000 dollars in free cash into the operating budget. Uh, we kind of, that was the sort of meet in the middle plan where, um, the school increased revenue projections and we kind of met in the middle and added that one-time free cash funding largely due to the special education changes that came in in the spring. And that was unanticipated and so we did that with the understanding that it is one-time funding. We were kind of stuck. Obviously we need to fund those needs and we understand that, um, but with the hope that with the reimbursement coming the year in a rear, that when we look at '24, we would be covered for those students and hoping that the, um, increase in students wouldn't grow in '24 so that we wouldn't have to do that in '25. And it is the understanding with one-time funds, we did just get free cash certified. Our free cash is just over half of what it was last year, uh, because we did provide substantial increases in capital as well, um, as we did over previous years. So the free cash just isn't there this year. Um, so my initial kind of concern about the 10% is we really have to find it somehow within the operating budget this year. We just don't have that free cash option available this year.
It's such, they're just more, kinda like an optics comment, right? I mean, as, the taxpayers are gonna look at it and we may be saying it's 10%, but they're gonna look at it and say, well, why the heck are my taxes going up so much more?
If I may, through the chair. We're also a lot closer to our levy limit than we were last year and I don't think we're gonna get very even close to 10% before we move to gas burn or, right?
And through the chair, just, just to echo that too, we did tap into our excess levy capacity. Um, in addition to that, uh, we actually went up 4% instead of 2.5 like we normally do. So that reduced our excess levy. Um, so, you know, my, my concern is too, kind of how we, we piece this all together, uh, without looking at our override. And that will be something that's of concern as we move forward. We'll need to look at the numbers and see where at. It's very preliminary for us as well. Um, in fact, our budget packages go out to department heads in two weeks. So we're a little bit delayed and behind you all in that process. So I can't give you exact numbers where we're at right now, um, but just something to keep in mind as we move forward.
Any other questions or comments or anybody? Good?
Um, you said this was preliminary. How preliminary?
Preliminary.
I guess I'll clarify this. You said it was preliminary, but Nancy?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Because it was so specific, it sounded more than preliminary.
So it's.
Sounded more than.
It's preliminary in the sense that we've never gone together with both, all these groups this early to talk about it, but after getting together last year, going through last year's, uh, meetings in the spring, we agreed we would start talking about it earlier. The committee's getting updates at our committee meetings, right? So we got an update, so we're giving you guys an update. That's all. It's, um, incredibly preliminary, almost too preliminary to make any decisions really, but as far as knowing the things that we're looking at, this is what we're looking at.
I would like to compliment this process. I think it's, it's very good and very appropriate. Thank you for organizing it.
Yeah. It was, uh, it was a joint effort of all the town groups. Do you wanna do the schedule or?
Sure. Can I, can I add one more thing? So one of the things Carol and I also have, as I mentioned at the beginning, is our priority list, right? Our, our top items that you said what's, I can tell you, I can, I can tell you that we need a classroom teacher at BES, at Boylston Elementary. That's, we, we need that. We need a math teacher at Tohonto. That, that I don't see going anywhere.
Some things for state mandated graduate requirements.
Yep, same thing with athletic trainer. That goes, the MIAA passes that, there's no saving that out. We, we need that.
Yeah. Nancy, if I could, uh, just, it's 7:45, we had a hard stop at 8:15, just.
Want me to just go to capital?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so for capital, I'll quickly go through the nation schools. So for Berlin, um, we, with card swipes on the access doors, they, we looked at that for security, that's 15,000. So the roof replacement, shingles, which I think you knew that was coming, 800,000, which we're gonna file our letter of intent with the MSBA in February, but we still gotta put it on. Um, air conditioning in the classrooms, 400,000. IT support continuing with our Chromebooks, um, additional projectors, 14 project, four projectors and network switches. And we also would like to get iPads for our kindergartners and first graders, that's 135,000. And then in the kitchen, we need, um, four insert steam tables. They're very old, they've been there a long time, they're, they're fading, so that's 9,000. So that comes to about 1.4 million. For BES, um, replacement of the cafeteria floor, safety issue, replacement of the library roof, same thing, we'll be applying with an MSBA, filing a letter in 10 February, that's five, we put it for, we got some quotes, 500,000. Um, updating plumbing in the bathrooms, 150,000. And also updating the bathrooms. The bathrooms are very old, they're original bathrooms from, from 1950s. Yeah, I was trying to think of the year.
Yep.
IT support, again, Chromebooks, iPads, projectors, network switches, 168,000. We need water boilers, replacement of two hot water boilers, um, they're from facility assessment, they're at their end of life. Again, we're putting also that in the MSBA with our letter of intent, that's for 500,000. And replacement of miscellaneous playground equipment. A lot of the playground equipment at BES is breaking. Um, this playground equipment is so expensive, so we put it in for 30,000. Tohonto, we need a lot more, a lot more is broken. We borrowed one graciously from the, from the, um, highway department to get us through, but we, we need to purchase a lot more, so that's in for 5,000. Paving of a walkway, we have a walkway that hasn't been paved, it's not ADA compliant, so that's 22,000. We need an additional floor scrubber. Our custodians, we use the floor scrubber on the first floor, can't go up to the second floor, it doesn't go in the elevator, so we would like an additional floor scrubber for 8,000. The track, the track is old, needs to be redone, including the long drum in the shop foot, um, so refurbishing the track for 150,000. Replacement of the water heater, 4,000. Non-student devices, um, updating teacher laptops and hardware replacements for 40,000. Same thing, hardware support, Chromebooks, laptops, projectors, network switches, 150,000. In the auditorium, it's an aging system, the auditorium projector for 15,000. In the auditorium, the music and sound system needs replacement. This would be year one of three, so this is for 45,000. This would be year one of three, so this is for forty-five thousand. The lighting on the stage would be year one of three, for forty-seven thousand. We need a storage unit, we don't have any where to store anything, so we would like to purchase a storage unit for six thousand. And the security swipe card system, it's aging, it keeps breaking, it needs to be upgraded. So that comes to three point three million. So in total, Berlin is at one point six million and Boylston is at one point eight.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just to give you a frame of reference, we did just get our free cash certified. We have one point seven 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 free cash, of which we legally have to retain ten percent at a minimum to roll over to the next year. So just to keep in mind as your list.
Kristi, can you please say what you have to retain again? Sorry, I have to turn.
At least ten percent we have to retain to roll over. We can't use it all. So you're looking at less than, I can do math tonight, one point five.
Yes.
Could I get a total on BES alone?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, one point four.
Sorry, Matt, yeah. The MSBA, the percentage, the reimbursement percentage isn't standard across all towns, right? Do we know what ours is yet?
No.
Which are changes based on?
Year to year.
Very scary year and receive and, yeah.
Okay. So either the best case it's forty-nine percent right now, it'll get better than that.
I honestly don't know.
I wanna say that's what it was when they built the schools, forty-nine percent, so I can't imagine that it would get better than that based on.
Yeah, they say it's a year to year, town to town, need to need.
And then the other comment is, I know there's also, I know, and I've talked to, I think you and Carol, but Nancy, is there's been a lot of discussion around the athletic fields themselves and I think before that track gets done, at least that soccer slash cross field needs to be figured out, what you're gonna do with it, because you don't wanna redo that track and then be driving over it.
They talked about the drainage issue or no?
Yeah, the drain, I mean, I've heard a whole list of issues with that here. Drainage and everything else, but I guess the short story is, is that that should be done probably before you do the track, before you gotta roll the track, before you do the thing.
That was definitely on our radar and discussed at our last subcommittee meeting and Julia brought that up too and, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the plan is in my mind, call it just a.
I think they're working out.
Well, we are looking at several solutions, varying levels of, you know, fixing that area, starting from the least possible one, to see if that works and see if that helps moving to other things as well. So we're all looking at it.
We started doing the air rating.
Air rating was first, right?
Through the chair. So Nancy, just make sure I got my math down correctly here.
Yep.
We're looking at about over three million for Berlin for capital between the two, one point four for BMS and Tohano except with one point six. Yes, okay. Now, possible up to maybe fifty percent reimbursement on that eight hundred thousand on the roof from NSBA, so that could potentially knock off up to maybe four hundred thousand of that. Okay, thank you.
Who else? Nancy, do you have anything else? So I think the next thing we wanna talk about, right, is those.
The buildings.
Matt, your idea now is maybe get, or we talked about getting outside group together to specifically talk about the three buildings. What's the plan for them? Do we keep them, maintain them, fix them? Do we talk about doing a new building elementary-wise somewhere? Nothing's decided yet, but other than maybe getting some people from the town, from the committees, people with some expertise in building, maintenance engineers, facilities, taking a look at the assessments we had, because we have one for each school now, I think. And just, you know, talking with the towns and figuring out what is the plan for these buildings. Tohano's building, so we're gonna keep that and fix it. BMS is relatively new, but it does need some work. BES is old, it could survive with some work or what are we gonna do, we don't know, so. The idea, Matt suggested the idea of getting people together to form a separate group to take a look at this, report to whoever they're gonna report to, the schools, the towns, and just start taking a look at that. So is that an idea that someone wants to talk about, do, agree with, not an idea? I mean, I'm worried for any ideas of what you wanna do.
Right, I want to just add to what Mike's saying, I think what was really helpful and I appreciated folks who came out to walk on tour with us, so you actually had eyes on what we were talking about, the buildings were aging particularly over in Boylston. And I think for Boylston in particular, as we were walking, is for, that is part of a bigger topic around buildings and what we're gonna do with them. So we would just offer, we would love to be a part of that conversation collectively, perhaps we can be a think tank for what we wanna do going forward in the future so that we're not, all of us wrap up against issues later on down the road and we have a plan for them. So I think it's just part of bigger facilities, even in Berlin too, as you grow, you need more space for, and locations for, for the services you're providing. So having that kind of ad hoc maybe would be really beneficial and happy to support that help and be part of that collectively.
I think it's a good way to prioritize what needs to be done, right? I mean, a lot of these problems, I mean, two that come to the top of the list for me, the BES roof and the septic here, I know for some people they feel like they're new problems, but they're not new problems. That BES roof has been argued about for as long as I can, I mean, I went to BES, I don't think goes that far back, but pretty close. And I mean, the septic here was, I mean, from the day the school opened, there was an issue with it. So it's, I think if we can look at it, if there's an outside roof that looks at it, then maybe we can just start to knock some of these things off, because we gotta get, it has to go away eventually, right?
And Matt, I'll tell you, with the septic piece here that day in Tohano, what was really helpful was we had the inspector come over, trying to think of his name, anyway, we were all talking about it collectively because he had historical information that really helped us understand what we needed to focus on or how that needed to be corrected. So it's just that collective group that can come together and solve these problems much better than individually and certainly over in BES, for example. What should we do, how much, how much is enough that we're gonna invest there? And if we are gonna keep that up and running, okay, then how do we get that done? You know, because I think the patchwork that we keep doing is, and then running into more money sometimes, I think then considering something new. But I'm not advocating for that, I think we just wanna work together and figure that out.
I think another thing I can come up with is, one of the ongoing things during that tour, the two that I was toward, I didn't go to Berlin, but was maintenance, right? And, you know, well, this didn't get taken care of, so this is where we are now. So I think we also need to look at, if we do put whatever another facilities tech in or whatever it is, that's just making a number sixty thousand dollars, but because of that, we can do this painting that's gonna prevent rust, or we can do this or that. And then five years from now, we're not spending fifty thousand dollars to paint and things like that. So I think that needs to be a big part of that as well.
Part of that, part of that plan we can be talking about, Dan's in the process, I think now of documenting it. He had no procedures, no, how do you run this pump, how do you, how do you, when does this need to get taken care of? When was the last time this was checked? So we've asked him to document that, check this, everything, so that whether it's Dan or somebody else in the future, they're not reinventing, they're just taking notice. That's a big part of the ongoing meeting is that it sounds like it doesn't exist right now. There's no, there's like procedure manual, at least not that anybody has come across. So yeah, that's a big part of what he's doing right now.
I will say it's a, it's a common problem that municipalities and schools struggle with and I wish there was a silver bullet and answer to it. Preventative maintenance is, is the last thing to get funded because your immediate needs are serving students and making sure you have someone to take your taxes at the counter and, you know, making sure you have police officers on the street. I mean, you know, it really comes down to like, oh, well, that little crap, we can fix it next year. The problem is, as you know, then all of a sudden a patch turns into now we need to replace the roof. So, you know, one of the things I think in terms of BMS, we wanna look at is kind of can we do somewhat of a phased, even like a borrowing approach to some of these items? So where we could perhaps fund them and get them done in this year, but do what I would call like some type of an internal borrowing where we fund it out and phase it out over a couple of years, given future capital that we know we're gonna have through free cash. And that's something we should talk about because obviously three million dollars versus one point seven, we don't have enough and that doesn't even look at what we are going to get from town departments or requests. So I think we need to get creative with our funding. I think adding some preventative maintenance, either professionals as you mentioned, or some type of line item in the budget that starts moving in that direction. We started last year with ten thousand dollars for maintenance and repairs. Not a lot of money, I'll tell you, it's October twenty-fourth it's gone, but we're trying to kind of build that up every year so that we can address some of these needs. So I think it's important to have those ongoing conversations before you become the situation where you have to do a tear down and a rebuild. And so many towns are getting into these types of situations and it's a real struggle and I, I don't have all the answers, but I think putting collective heads together and talking about it is great.
I agree, I was able to go to the walkthrough, but I did hear that the facilities tech was saying that a point five FTE custodian at the BES would benefit and we wouldn't be having to pay rates to have people come in and do work if we could have enough staff to be able to do it as part of their everyday. That building is owned by the municipality and rented by the school and I know that the municipality has the vested interest to make sure that that building and this building up here is taken care of and managed well so that we can prevent the outlandish cost when we have to repair or replace.
So we'll, we'll maybe talk, each group talk about what might be a good fit or some building like that and open that.
I did wanna mention too, we looked at that, the grounds, the grounds to make and so when that individual was working on the grounds, they would be filling that, they get.
I agree.
Buildings too, so it was kind of to full provision, right?
So spring and fall, position would be a lot outside, but during the winter months, you'd get that person definitely.
Any final thoughts, final comments?
Oh, one other thing. So for this committee that we're talking about, it might be beneficial to, you know, obviously have a like select board or town representative, school committee members, but I'm wondering if it's worthwhile to have like someone from the community, like a planning board member, or if there's anyone out there that's interested in, you know, oh, I'm an engineer, I'm an architect, or, you know, I maintain buildings, or I'm in construction, or somebody that facilities is in their career, to kind of sit on this committee as a, as the community expert maybe from each town. I think that would be helpful to, so I mean, it would mean soliciting more support.
Another one, thank you, and I know one of the things too, I was thinking about with the tour, just to mention with the tours again, like and I had talked about continuing those tours and as we, as we make these decisions and have that community right in place, we can really look certainly at the schools and see what we've been able to accomplish and celebrate that, right? How much we've gotten done and also what it means to the line or whatever needs, kidding me anticipated this, at this point. We worry about things bursting all the time, every day we seem to hear about something going on that we have to correct. So, you know, what, we'll be able to keep an eye on those more closely and you'll see them too.
Yeah, and Berlin, the fire chief and inspector, was the plan, showed up, I think we should do the same in Boylston next year because that was an education in itself, so.
I don't wanna thank you for the invite and sorry for the last minute crash, but it was, it was actually really educational for me and we happened to be talking about it, they were down at a site and one person said, hey, I'm headed up here, why don't you come, why don't you come with me too? And I, it was hugely helpful for me to understand the needs and actually see them. And, you know, in the line of what you're talking about Nancy, we actually are hiring a building, we're calling it a buildings maintenance operator person who's gonna do indoor and outdoor as part of the highway department to look at town buildings. So I think it's smart and it's the best you can do for right now and then you try to add the resources as you can to it.
Correct.
Okay, final, final final?
Just one more question.
Yes.
So, I think you had mentioned just the library roof.
Yes.
So is the rest, the rest of it is?
I think. I think we need to talk about it. I think that this committee needs to decide, are we gonna build a new, are we gonna improve a new building or are we gonna invest? We have the facility studies, public record, I don't know if you've looked at it, but there's, there's a lot more than what's.
Yeah, I've looked at it.
I think just Dan put some patches on or.
Right, so the library roof is absolutely necessary.
Yeah, I remember.
So we feel we can get another year or two, because we're trying to phase it.
As far as, but as far as the, the, um, school building authority goes, does it make sense, I'm not a decision for this moment, but does it make sense to, I mean, I guess the way I look at it.
Put a whole group on it.
Load it up and see, see what you get.
Oh, no, I plan to put that roof in.
Yeah, the whole roof.
Even though it's not on the cap of Clinton, Clinton, because by the time we hear that, who knows, it could be a couple of years out, we don't know the level.
Right, okay, so it'll be the entire with as far as that goes.
Yes, yes.
If it's an asset in towns, it's just like, makes sense, makes sense.
We had a lot of luck with NSBA in my previous meeting on the main house side, so yeah, we should chat at some point. Yes, the state interests are great and, you know, they are really receptive and they do have a lot of funding typically at the state level, so.
We're hopeful that we'll get included and prioritized, but it just depends on the potential for that, the year and what their needs are, regarding that, but, but we can continue that conversation within this couple of years.
We do have some advocates at the state level right now, so while that process is going on from the start, let's make sure we have them engaged through the whole thing so they're advocating for us, you know, on their side of the road.
That's good, yeah.
All right, sounds good. Thanks everybody for coming in from both towns, it was really helpful, appreciate it and we'll keep going. But can I get a moment to adjourn this meeting?
So much.
Laurie, Julie, Alfer.
Hi.
All right, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.